Thank you for coming tonight. I want to go ahead and get tonight's council meeting started for October the fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Tonight, we have Mr. Robert Pickle that is going to open our meeting with the invocation. Mr. Pickle, if you'll just come up to the microphone. And after the invocation, we'll stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Lord, we come to you tonight. We thank you just for being able to be here tonight, just to hear the talking and laughter in the room, and that's the way it should be. And, Lord, we pray that that's the way it will continue to be as we come together here in Easyly, a small town that we love. Been here all my life, and I thank you for how you've grown me into an adult. It's exciting to see all the people that are coming into Easyly that are not used to the small town that has grown into a bigger town. Lord, we thank you for our mayor. We lift her up. We pray that you just put your hedge of protection around her and give her wisdom, guidance. Just she'll know it's from you, and you're guiding her. And all the council members, we pray that you watch over them, and, Lord, we lift them up to you tonight. A lot of hard decisions are always having to be made in a town that's growing. God, I pray that you will show us your purpose for Easyly, where you're taking us, from where we've been. We can learn from where we've been, learn from where we're going to go. Lord, there's so many people that you have working in Easyly. Chief Liner, how you just working in his life. Mario, Lord, you brought in a lawyer to Easyly that's helping us and guiding us, and you've done this. You're putting this group together to be able to take care of Easyly, a place that I love, a place that, you know, my dad taught me how to love. We thank you, Jesus, that you're just right here with us, and I pray that when people come up to this mic, that they understand that we're all working together through all of everything that's going on, all the construction, all the house building, all the roads that need to be built, everything that's going on, the crazy as well as the good. God, I pray that you continue to keep your hand on Easyly, and you just guide us as citizens, as council, as mayor. We thank you for what the police department does and what the fire department does. Through the storm that we had, it's so cool to see neighbors helping neighbors come together, cutting trees and getting trees off houses and out of their driveways, and all that you do for us and how you take care of us. Lord, we love you. We thank you for what you're going to do in our little town and what you're doing and what you're going to continue to do when we're all not here anymore. And, Lord, we thank you and lift you up, lift this committee up, and all that you have to do through them, and thank you for them. Thank you for their willingness to give their time and what they do. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. First up tonight, we have our approval of the minutes as written. Are there any additions or deletions to the minutes? Okay. Hearing none, they stand as written. We'll move into our ward report from our council members, starting with Ward One, Councilman O'Shaughnessy.
Well, we've certainly, we've certainly had the excitement since last month's meeting, haven't we? You know, it came to my mind during that hurricane on that Friday morning. I left my house at nine o'clock that Friday morning and started riding through my ward, and after about two and a half hours, I ended up working my way back home. But I called Eddie, and lo and behold, the answer, my road was blocked, my street was blocked, tree down. And I gave him that information, and then I went back on around Huntington North and Halifax and Huntington Road were both blocked. So I called him again, and he wrote them down. That was reports twenty-two and twenty-three that morning. And I said, Eddie, don't answer the phone again. When I call you, I'll just leave you the message with the address. And of course, Paltersville Road and Mossy Smith, and then on and on and on. Everything was blocked. The guys had been really doing the job. It was nasty that morning. I went on up to the tennis courts, Marion Harris Tennis Courts, and I hope they're not totally destroyed, but I think they are. They were underwater, and one of our, one of our policemen was sitting up there trying to get the attention of folks across the creek. They were, couldn't get out. The water was so high. But I said all that to say this, during times of need and times of problems, is really when those of us that have the fortune and opportunity to be involved with the city government should be reaching out and doing something and looking out for what can we do for the folks in our city, who needs help, who has a problem. I would say I felt a little guilty that I didn't have a chainsaw and I couldn't help those folks saw those trees up. But at seventy-two years old, I ain't planning on having anybody saw a tree up. Sorry about that. But, you know, it was really something to see, and the guys, Weddington was doing lunch. I guess they got paid for it. I didn't ask him. It wasn't any of my business. But for the fellows on Sunday, and I ran into some of the Public Works fellows Sunday afternoon going in to get lunch, they'd been working since four-thirty Sunday morning. So while the rest of us were home in bed, some of our city employees were out here, not just the cops and the firemen, but the other fellows were out here doing stuff like that. My phone's been ringing off the hook. When you going to get the trees? When's all this going to be finished? When's this going to happen? You know, and we know it's going to take time. But other than that, I don't think we lost anybody in Ward One. I don't think. But that's about it. I like to give speeches, don't I?
Thank you. Okay, Ward Two, Councilwoman Davidson.
I'll just have to ditto what Councilman O'Shaughnessy said, not to be redundant, but the staff has been phenomenal through all of this. And Mr. Fortner explained, it's going to be a long time before all this tree debris is gone. So I can suggest is be careful when you're going around those piles and make sure somebody's not coming through there faster than you are. It's going to be a long process, but you know what? This too shall pass, and we'll be better once it's all cleaned up. And thank everybody for coming tonight.
Thank you. Okay, Ward Three, Councilwoman Rainey.
Well, I just have to ditto that as well because the city really did a great job with all the hours they put in and everything. Fortunately, I guess my side of town did a little bit better than Tom's because I only got a couple of phone calls, and it was really about some debris that's blocking a road and they can't see past it. And I myself almost hit a car because I couldn't see the car coming, but hopefully they'll get that taken care of.
Okay, thank you. Ward Four, Councilman Jones.
Yes, we know this is going to take some time to get things cleaned up. We do just ask everybody to be patient. We know Public Works is doing the best they can, and Helene has impacted us, but it's impacted other areas a lot worse than us. A lot of folks are in a lot worse shape than we are, and let's just pray and hope that everything works out. And we're just thankful. It could have been worse. Thank you.
Thank you. Ward Five, Councilman Rainey, Councilman Alexander.
I drove through Greenville on the day of the storm and just saw so much of just standing water, so much flooding, and it was so much more than I saw here in Easyly. And I think that's got a lot to do with how good our storm water department works. I really appreciate you guys.
Okay, thank you. Jim Robinson is not with us tonight, but he left me a statement that he wanted me to read on his behalf. He's not able to attend this evening. And he says, "Please convey our greatest appreciation to the city crews, combined utility crews, first responders, and countless others who worked around the clock and continue to work to help our community recover from the widespread devastation caused by Hurricane Helene. I have never witnessed such destruction in our city, but we will recover. Thank you again to all who helped. Jim Robinson." So that's from Mr. Robinson. And then for myself, it's, when I say learning curve, there's nothing like a new mayor being hit with the storm of the century in the same year. But as we find ourselves on the other side of the worst storm in most of our memories, and if Mr. Robinson doesn't remember it, I feel safe saying that it's probably not happened. In my memory, I've been here thirty-four years, I want to express my sincere appreciation to the first responders of the city of Easyly's fire and police departments, in addition to what I call the road warriors of Public Works, and the amazing team at Parks and Recreation, and in addition, the administrator for his tireless dedication and guidance, as well as all of the City Hall employees who pitched in, helped us cook, did lots of things. While many of those people went without power and/or water in their own homes, even through the next week, they were all there together. We were all there together getting through this. And I'm so very proud of ECU. I think everybody that lives in the city of Easyly tonight, maybe that's where a lot of people are tonight, their meeting is tonight, and I kind of hate that I couldn't be there to express. So I'll do it here. I'm very proud to live in Easyly as they had their entire coverage area consisting of over sixteen thousand customers up within about a week. I'm also so thankful to the citizens that helped each other. I heard from many of you that were out cutting things and moving things and hauling things. It's just amazing. It has reminded me of what I love so much about the city of Easyly. We live in the best community ever. The city will continue to post and make available pertinent information as we have updates regarding emergency assistance of all forms and interests. I hope that we'll continue to work together to get through this as we keep our neighbors in North Carolina and Florida in our prayers and help them where we can. Now, an announcement due to the storm issues, the MRB Group Public Workshop that we had scheduled to have the public come in as an open house. You could come in and give input and see where we are with the USD, the UDO plans. We're going to have that October the twenty-fourth, so make note of that. I think we'll advertise it if we haven't already, from eleven AM to one PM is the first session, if you can drop in. And then again, from four PM to seven PM for people that work that want to come in and see. It's going to be at the Department of Public Works, and it will allow you to give your input on the land use and zoning review that MRB is working on for the city. I also want to give a shout out to our IT Director. I'm sure if he's here, he's probably behind the scenes, and announce the financial savings that he has brought to the city residents. In close collaboration with Spyglass to optimize the technology enhancement line items for the city, focusing on telecommunications, software licenses, and IT services, strategic contract negotiations, along with identifying more suitable services, they have successfully reduced our expenditures. And this partnership has resulted in an annual savings of seventy thousand, three hundred and eighty-eight dollars and forty cents, amounting to a total of two hundred and eleven thousand, one hundred and sixty-five dollars and twenty cents over three years. These savings are being redirected towards critical infrastructure projects and ensuring better resource allocation and enhanced community services. We are committed to continuing this strategic approach for further cost efficiencies in the future of the city of Easyly. So that's my message. Thank you all for being here and for what you've gone through in the city and for pulling together and getting through the storm. I'm glad to see, I'm glad to see everybody's faces. So, next, we have updates on city activity.
Yes, ma'am. We heard a lot about debris a while ago, and I'm going to have Eddie come up and just talk about some of the debris, some of our obstacles, challenges, as we try to get it all up. As we work to clean the city up, we are allowed by the county to take five brush truck loads of brush a day, and that's the limit that we have set before, as I stand here tonight. We're working close with them, and they are also working close with SC DOT. There's been a contract signed through the county that will enable DOT to come assist us on some of this debris removal. So they are currently in O'Conne County, working their way to Pickens County, where they have to clean the state roads first before they come into the residential sections. So they will be cleaning up like Highway Eight, One Thirty-Five, and some of the state roads, and then they will get to come into the resident. Please be patient with us, is all I can ask, because we're, we were working every morning. The first week, we worked from dusk to dark. And I mean, and we stored some of the brush back behind City Hall just to try to get roads opened up was the main thing. But we've got to double handle that whenever landfill lets us return to get more than just five brush trucks a day. But that's where we stand right now, and our phone number is eight-five-five-seven-nine-one-six. So y'all can call that if you see anything. And if it comes up to where there's a dangerous situation, and I know what they were talking about as far as sightline, we'll try to get that caught up first. We don't want, but the larger piles we're trying to leave for the contractors that'll be coming in, and we're trying to go around and get a bunch of the small stuff. Oh, yes, thank you. And the lint needs to be six feet long, and that's the way for the contractors, six feet, or they will not, if it's any larger than that, they will not pick it up. Have I missed anyone?
No private roads?
No private roads. They have to all be city-owned roads. And there's already a couple of subdivisions that have called me that have private roads, and they're, they don't have service, they don't receive service for any of our goods. I think that's it. And then Danielle, she's going to talk about Treats on the Street.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Danielle Hess. I'm the program events coordinator for the city. I just want to give everyone a reminder and let everyone know about Treats on the Street. That is Friday, October twenty-fifth. It is from six PM to nine PM. It'd be at Old Market Square and the perimeter of Old Market, as well as any downtown businesses that would like to participate as well. We'll have the Flashbacks performing on the amphitheater stage, and then we will also have the Sanderson Sisters, anyone would like to meet, from Hocus Pocus, and that's also free as well. This is a free event. We'll have over fifty vendors giving out candy for the kids, and they can come. And like I said, it's a free event, and we invite the whole community. Thank you.
Thank you, Danielle. And then, last thing, voting is always an important issue for me. Early voting starts next Monday, the twenty-first, eight-thirty to five, Monday through Friday up until November second. And there's five locations around the, around the county. But get out and vote. Every election's important, including this one, so get out and vote. Thank you. That's all I have.
All right. Community announcements tonight, we have Mr. Fetter with the Easyly Museum.
Mayor, Council, I appreciate it. First of all, I want to say thanks to the city's staff, employees, first responders, and Easyly Combined for the efforts they put out. It does, like the mayor said, it does make us lucky to be living in Easyly. But as far as the museum's concerned, we had to change the date for our fundraiser to November seventh. Tickets are going to be forty-five dollars each. There'll be the Low Country Boyle. We'll have a silent auction. Be a lot of fun, as always. And also, special for this year, we've got membership in the One Fifty Club. That's to commemorate the one hundred and fiftieth anniversary. It includes two tickets to the fundraiser, special preview of the museum with up to five people, and a commemorative gift. Lastly, as far as museum's concerned, we've got a walking tour of downtown, starting the second Sunday of each month. It'll be hosted by Jim Hawkins. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next on our agenda is citizens wishing to address city council, and we did have some signups from last time that were carried over tonight. So Jennifer, if you will. Lisa Borian.
First, I want to thank Easyly Combined Utilities. You guys are the best utility company. If I ever move, I'm staying where I can have Easyly Combined, because you guys got our power back. I had surgery that day, so we were out in that storm at seven-thirty in the morning, driving through, one-twenty-three to get to the hospital, so I know how bad it was. But y'all got my power back that night, and I'm very appreciative. Mayor, I have a special favor to ask for the Huntington North subdivision people. We have Charter Spectrum. People all around us have Charter Spectrum. The Combined Utilities Manager went and contacted them October sixth and told them that they have a hundred percent restored power because they said they couldn't come back. Whenever we contact, I contact them either by their chat or try to call, they say, "You are out of service. There's nothing we can do for you." But they took out my very large payment last month. And so I would like to ask, if possible, Mr. Couch or Ms. Talbert, if you could call Charter on behalf of the citizens here, because I know that, like, Oak Creek has it back, and I'm sure Middle Creek, I believe, and Smoothfield have it back, and there's some people around us on Brushy Creek that have it, but Huntington North, we've got nothing. My phone is on Internet. I work from home sometimes. I can't work from home, so I have no Wi-Fi, no cable, no phone. I've got elderly neighbors that only have a cellphone, and they ran out of minutes, so they were using mine. So if somebody could please help us, because Charter does not care. I've seen one truck last Friday when I was going to work at seven o'clock in the morning, sitting in Rock Springs Church up here, by Walmart and stuff. And he was just sitting in the parking lot looking like he was waiting for somebody. So if you guys could please help out. I know everyone says it's not the city of Easyly problem, but I don't know where else to turn. I've tried everything. People have tried. My whole neighborhood, they want to sign a petition, you know, talking to different neighbors and the things. So we're all trying to help each other and get through it. And I know it sounds like a very small thing, but anyway, if you could help us, that would be great. And one other question that I wanted to ask from last month, the building moratorium, I think it expires in December, because I think it went into effect either May or June, and it was for six months. And I was just wondering, is the city council going to extend it into December meeting, or, I know Mario had said they were working on the paperwork or the information and stuff, but I didn't know if they were going to extend it or not. I know there's lots of building to go on because of all the horrible storm damage we have, but I just wondered what the staff says. Thank you again for all of you, all your service and firemen, the policemen, Easyly Combined, and our neighbors who were out helping.
Ashley Carroll. John Wallace.
What do you say? Infrastructure was up, garbage was picked up, people were out with chainsaws, the neighbors clearing streets around me. We had streets completely blocked off, it's been a field never cleaned by the end of Friday. Stuff up on the side, up on people's yards. A new mayor, who's just been here this year, goes through this. I don't know if this is her first rodeo. One of them ran me off in the summer when Eddie went up through there and took out the power on the beach and run me off four days ahead of my scheduled time to leave. In thirty-eight years, I'd never been run off that beach, and I got right off. I had an Iowa hurricane go over me in the middle of Virginia, and I've been down this road before, and it is amazing at how fast neighbors and infrastructure moved out. We called our timber guy, and we said, "Look, we've got a tree in the backyard down, the one that you used to trim." He said to my wife, he said, "Virginia, I got a thousand people ahead of you." We called him this past weekend, and he said, "Virginia, I've worked ever since the storm hit. I've worked fourteen hours a day. And when I get through taking trees off people's houses, I'll come over and take care of yours." And we said, "That'll be fine." Now, we have to work with what we got, and what we got here is pretty amazing for a city of this size. Twenty-four thousand, five hundred people, and we were up and running. Combined Utilities, we fuss about them. They had our power up in eight hours. And we had AT&amp;T cable, and we haven't been out since the power came back on. And everybody that's got anybody else's cable in this town is raising sand, to use a southern term. And I don't blame them. At least we didn't lose cellphone service. So I just want to thank you all. I had some things I wanted to say last month, but as God will inform us, he's in charge, and things change. Now, we went through a tough time, and we saw some miracles happen locally. We appreciate the police department. We appreciate the fire department, because we know we were out there in this mess. They were out there. So we appreciate that. I'm the security chief for my church, and we have an officer in the parking lot every Sunday, and they were missing two Sundays, and I don't worry about it. They had other things to do. I'm the security chief. I took care of it. Thank you all. Mayor, God bless you, and thank you again.
Dennis Gallagher.
Good evening. I'm Dennis Gallagher, One Twenty-One Springdale Lane here in Easyly. My wife and I have lived there for eighteen years. We're from Asheville originally, so we have some friends up there going through it. Just want to thank council, the mayor, all the department heads for what they've done over the past two weeks. One of the most impressive things to me was before the winds died down, before the rain stopped, before the trees stopped falling, a police officer and two firemen came to our door to do a welfare check. And I'm assuming they covered all the neighborhoods the same way. It was amazing. It really was. Also, want to thank God that I'm here with my wife, and I'm a little embarrassed to say this, but we had no structural damage on Springdale Lane. We had three large oak trees in the front yard, and we're on a first-name basis now. They'll be gone at some point in time. I'm not worried about it. Also like to thank the churches, all the members that pulled together to cut us out of our street and got us back to where we could get to the grocery store and that sort of thing. It was much appreciated and very much a surprise, but it should have been. That was my fault. In full disclosure, I'm retired, I had a dual career. I'm retired from New Energy. I did thirty-two years. Also retired from law enforcement, twenty-nine years, and I know what all these people went through and are still going through to keep us up and going, and we deeply appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Bob Easter.
But as a retired fire chief, I personally want to thank fire department, the police department, Combined Utilities, all of these guys. No matter what was going on at their house, I mean, they could have damage. They were out helping us, and you can't put that into words. These guys stepped up, did their jobs, and I want to say thank you for everybody, the volunteers, everybody. I can't name everybody because I don't know, man, there's too many to name individually. I want to thank you for keeping us updated, and I want to thank Councilwoman Davis for keeping updates. But my main thing was to say thank you to all those guys.
Louise Gallagher. Louise Gallagher.
Well, I'm Louise Gallagher. I'm the other half of this one over here. I'm proud of it. Madam Mayor, Council, I don't really know what else to say. I believe it's all been said. The only thing left to say is the churches were very good, and of course, our law enforcement and fire, and of course, our utility people, God bless them, because we were without, excuse me, without lights for five days. So we've got it back on. And this lady back here, I appreciate because we still don't have Charter, and I don't know where we're going to get supposedly Wednesday, but that remains to be seen, as Daddy used to say. We'll see about that. But that's it. We're very appreciative, we're very thankful. And I can tell you this, in 27 years in Asheville, nobody came to check on us, but they did here. Thank you.
Okay, thank you all very much. I'm so glad everybody's making it through, everybody's okay and got good reports. Okay, we'll move into our unfinished business. We have a second reading on an ordinance 2024-09 to amend fiscal year 2425 operating budget to authorize the purchase agreement for a ladder truck for Easley Fire Department. Is there a motion to bring it to discussion?
I make the motion.
Second.
Okay. We did discuss this in the work session. Is there any questions, any discussion? No, and I will call for the question. Okay. We'll do a roll call. Ward One.
Yes.
Ward Two.
Yes.
Ward Three.
Yes.
Ward Four.
Yes.
Ward Five.
No.
Mayor Talbert.
Yes.
Okay. Moving on to the new business, ordinance first reading is ordinance 2024-10 to amend section 3022 of chapter 30 of title III of the Easley City Code, at the recommendation of Councilman Robinson, who is not here tonight. Is there a motion to bring that to the floor?
Motion to accept.
I say it.
Okay. Is there any discussion before I call for the question? Yes.
I have an amendment.
Okay.
It was the amendment that we discussed in the work session.
So you're making a motion to amend?
Yes, a motion to amend. This is to, really, this is a clarifying motion, just so, just so that it's clear, and this is adding a sentence that simply says, "This record shall indicate how each council member voted." I just think the ordinance as written leaves a little bit of ambiguity there.
Is there a second for the motion?
A second.
Okay.
He'll be the first and then the second to his motion, and then vote on his motion.
So he can't be the first?
No.
Oh, okay, so we need a motion to amend?
Motion to amend.
Okay.
A second.
Okay. Roll call. Ward One.
No.
Ward Two.
Yes.
Ward Three.
Yes.
Ward Four.
Yes.
Ward Five.
Yes.
Mayor Talbert. Okay, next up is new resolution.
Now you have to go back to the, now to approve the motion to amend.
So now we have to go back to the first motion?
Now we have to, voting on the ordinance to amend, adopt this ordinance as amended by that motion.
Okay, so we have to have a motion to adopt that motion. Correct?
I make the motion.
You've approved the amendment.
Yes.
Now we're going to vote on the ordinance as amended.
Okay, do I have a motion to vote on the ordinance as amended?
Motion to approve the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, now we do a roll call. Ward One.
Yes.
Ward Two.
Yes.
Ward Three.
Yes.
Ward Four.
Yes.
Ward Five.
Yes.
Mayor Talbert.
Yes.
Okay, next up, new resolution. We have Resolution 2024-09 to authorize the city of Easley to assume a claim deductible with the South Carolina Municipal Insurance and Risk Financing Fund. Do we have a motion to bring that to the table?
So move.
Second.
Okay. Do we want to explain that, or we want to go to roll call? Any discussion?
I, I think it would be good just to have a very brief explanation of what we're doing.
For the, for the people here. Okay, Emily, can you share what this means for the people that are here that were not at the work session?
And to give credit where credit is due.
So I'm standing in for our finance director, Ralph. He is at a conference, but he left me some information to share. Currently, our deductibles are zero for general liability, auto liability, and public official liability, $5,000 for law enforcement liability, and $1,000 for property inland marine, inland marine and auto physical damage. And so, looking at our claim history, it's recommended to do $5,000 deductible on all policies, and that will result in a total savings of $39,048.
So the point is that we've saved $40,000 that Ralph has helped us with. So is there any discussion, or shall we go straight to the roll call? No discussion? Okay, let's do a roll call. Ward One.
Yes.
Ward Two.
Yes.
Ward Three.
Yes.
Ward Four.
Yes.
Ward Five.
Yes.
Mayor Talbert.
Yes.
Okay, and lastly, we have a council vote of approval on the ATAX Committee's recommendation for the dispersment of accommodation taxes from where they met. Is there a motion to bring that to the floor?
Move.
Second.
Okay.
Point of order.
Yes.
Since we have adopted the voting resolution, should we now be voting by hand?
Don't we have to have two votes on that?
So, well taken.
Any? Okay. All right, then we'll have a roll call. Ward One.
Yes.
Ward Two.
Yes.
Ward Three.
Yes.
Ward Four.
Yes.
Ward Five.
Yes.
Mayor Talbert.
Yes.
Okay. And that concludes our council meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
So move.
Second.
Second, meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for coming out.
David.
Glad to see you well.
David, there's something under your chair.
Thank you for that second.